Welcome, everybody, to the regular May 28, 2024 meeting of the Finance Standing Committee of Nary Committee Services Board of Directors. We have a forum. One member, Mr. Hendrickson, is, as I said, is on an excused absence from a family matter. And the other four members are of the board here at the committee here at Long Island, of course. As for a chair report, I just, I guess I should welcome everybody to this inaugural meeting of a committee in the main Bets Hall. And we're using the technology, the same technology we used in the smaller room, except we're we're kind of test driving it in a real situation, I guess, a real meeting in the large hall. All the other rules apply, though, something might, we don't have, the public comment is going to be, you know, at the podium, but no amplification or PA system. So it's going to be like a regular meeting in other respects. And I think we'll go quite well. Ms. Dodson has set up the system here for us to monitor. And I think I might have noted, we have, we have a couple of written comments that were submitted. They will not be read aloud. As a policy at the board, I'm not reading, we're not doing, reading aloud submissions. And each committee has to make its choice, each committee chair can make, you know, make its choices as to what they do. My choice is to simply include them in the record with the minutes and maybe with that. So to carry on, I think we have, we have a slot here for ad hoc subcommittee reports. I don't know if either of the committees has anything to report from the last month. Scott or David? Darren, okay, because I suspect they were probably, I mean, and Denise, did you have any vote with the ad hox?
No.
No, because we were in a business budget, so that's what I thought. Committee member communications, does anyone have any brief announcement or question, clarification of anything they'd like to share with us, share publicly? Hearing none, I'll move on to public comment, and this is public comment to items that are not on this agenda, but are within the purview of the committee. I'll ask first if anyone is present here who wants to comment in this section. And then I'll ask Ms. Dodson if she has anyone online who'd like to comment. First of all, anyone in the hall, we have one person in the hall, he's gonna not comment. Haley, anybody on your side?
No.
So move on to the presentation. Oh. Okay, well, let's go back.
Frank, please. Randy, Adrian, from the Lions Club, Dick Clark. And the belt has formed a group of the five one three Cs in town. One of them met last week to discuss how we can coordinate and do more things together and do better for the community as a whole. And just FYI, one of the things that came up that I are saying besides helping each other organizations do better, was thinking on a project like the Bets Hall to try to raise money from the Bets Hall to do the improvements that are needed. So I guess that might be part of the stuff. It has some impact on this committee, that's quite important. Because they don't know if that ever will come to fruition, but it was one of the part of the discussions. And we are not meeting again in August, so that time will have more discussion coming back.
Thank you. Just to note, yeah, just to note, the two members, the two people that Dave mentioned, Greg Gittens and Dick Clark, were also on that ad hoc subcommittee of the board trying to deal with the Bets Hall situation. So they've been active, interested in helping the Bets Hall for quite some time, so it's a good bit of. Any other committee member communications? But so we'll move on to passing both of them. The agenda. Which is the business of the minutes on the April 23 meeting. Any questions, corrections, or additions we would like to make to the minutes? Hearing none. Do I want?
Yes, I will move to the end of the page.
Second. Okay. Then move seconded that the minutes be approved as written. On poll roll here, some, Mr. Pearson.
Aye.
And Dan.
Aye.
Ms. Dow, Ms. Chris.
Aye.
Passes, much faster forward zero. Moving on to our major, our major work here today, the preliminary budget. I'm gonna ask Ms. Ritz, how she would like to do this, how she would like to present it. I was thinking she would present the, maybe do it fun by fun. And have questions, take questions for us as we go. I don't know if that was your, your choice to do that way. And then we have a question, a lot of questions, and then I'll open it to public comment. And then have back to the special in terms of recommendations we're making and changing around on the seat. So I'll turn it over to, actually, Mr. McManay, also, welcome. Welcome. My pleasure. Do you want, do you want Denise just to go ahead?
Yeah, we've seen that on several times, and she's got a goal prepared, so I think she can agree.
Stay away.
So we, staff report A is reviewing and discussing the 24, 25 preliminary budget. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over the staff report, and then we can just, we can get into all of the detail for each department. Um, I think I just, the staff report outlines what we have, like, there's different things that we have to follow in preparing deadlines we have to meet and that sort of thing. But also, I, you know, reading the budget policy and everything, I see the budget coming here is really a collaborative effort, getting your feedback on things that you would want to see in the budget narrative going forward, explanations, that sort of thing. So I see this as an exchange for us to help me best describe, if we bring this before the board. So. So I just wanna say, this is the preliminary budget, so this is just the operating budget for the fiscal year 24, 25. The board must approve this before July 1st, 2024. The final budget, which comes before the board in August, they must approve it before September. It will include the fund balances, except after, you know, this fiscal year has closed, and the reserve designation. So I just want to say that this budget does not include the reserve designation that will be brought forward or the fund balances, that that will be presented in the final budget. So that's detailed out here in the staff report. And so it also outlined the district budget policy, which we all just reviewed and updated and approved. And so these are my other parameters and the rules that are following when I need this budget. And so the procedures included in the district budget policy are plans of resources, calendaring, mid-year budget updates, organization chart and position allocation listing, the CIP, and the overhead allocation, income allocation of property taxes, our structure and consolidation entries. So our plans, goals, and resources, the, so the requirement of this is that there's a narrative that discusses measurable goals, objectives, and plans, trade-offs between competing objectives, and mid-year recording on achievement gaps. We have not yet drafted the budget narrative, that's something that is included in the board packet. And so, again, that's something that through discussion from today will help me direct me in drafting that narrative. The calendaring is, there's just very specific dates, dates in which the board needs to approve this line. Mid-year budget updates. The policy is written, which we didn't update it, which we probably have, but I give quarterly updates, so it's not just a mid-year. It's a quarterly update that I give regularly. So this, the budget also includes the organization chart from last year and any changes for this year, as well as a position allocation listing. And so those are the lists that I create, the budget for all of our labor costs, the capital improvement plans. Those go before the research, resource and infrastructure and finance. And this is the finance committee review of those CIP lists that you'll be handing here. I can say that the resource and infrastructure committee approved some projects that we did take out of this budget because of funding issues. So those projects were a facility and resources building relocation, administrative office relocation, and ATV for facilities and resources, a fire station roof and gutter repair project, a fire, a type one fire engine, a rescue ski for the fire department, and fire department gate and fencing. These targets have been identified as priorities and may be brought before the board during the year as a, for a budget and adjustment for approval, but they did not make it into this preliminary budget. The overhead allocation, which we're all familiar with, and I'm using the old methodology to use that and so we can come up with something else this year. The income allocation for property taxes has been completed in accordance with the budget policy and the wastewater, a small amount is assigned to the wastewater enterprise fund budget to offset low income rate reductions. So this just was the different budget schedules on how this is formatted. And so with that, I'm gonna move on going through the actual budget on page 10.
There's just no doubt.
Oh.
Question. David.
You missed your pros. You don't know what's happening, so you did it up there.
What, what was that?
Ms. Chris.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Your budget schedule should just. Not keep that out.
Thank you, thank you.
Well done getting rid of that.
What?
Well done getting rid of that.
Yes, just on there, yeah, I do not have a budget at this point, so.
Listen.
So page 10, you will see the summary budget for the general fund, which is including the administrative department, fire department, capabilities, and resources. And you're projecting a surplus of $253,000, $266. So page 13, this is the fire department. So you can see that their revenue total is 3.1 million approximately. And that's including both of that is property taxes, as well as their fire benefit assessment, which was, we create that with a CPI. And the grant revenue is for the safer program.
So again, those that's safer for in, when do those dollars run out?
January 25.
January 25.
But this is saying, this is assuming that we get it for, because we did apply for it to continue. So if that changes in the mid-year, those positions will no longer be active. So whichever way, it's a net zero to us, we won't get the grant, but we also have the expense. I did budget, though, like we're gonna get.
Budgeted for us.
Yes. But if we don't happen to get the grant, I will, we would be eliminating those positions, so it's probably still be in that zero, it's very legit.
And if we did get approved for the grant, it'll come before the board for a little bit. But one thing that we, it might be helpful for us is that if we, as you do the, as you do the, you walk us through the budget, talk about what, what has, what has changed essentially? If there's any significant change from the prior year in terms of payment, I don't, we have a number, but, you know, a broad number for the actual total fund, but anything, any developments that are new this year that weren't reflected, say, in last year's budget, Michael local, like the safer, the safer grants firing as an event that we're looking for this time, or we're taking the plan, and we weren't talking about last year, that sort of things.
Yeah. I think the one significant thing that would have changed is the three fully funded firefighter positions. Or it's probably two, because we had one that was funded, just not filled.
Yeah, but that was done last year, so I'm not counting that as a change, because that was reflective in last year's budget. This is.
The one position for all, all three.
Okay.
Does the safer program get renewed? We have applied for renewal, you have to apply for renewal. So we have applied, so we're just at, we're pretty well, chief, we're pretty much. When, when you will find out if we get.
We should, they should, I believe it's August is when they start, like, FEMA just starts giving out, we don't know exactly when we're gonna find out, but I think August is when it starts.
My impression of safer grants in the past is that they're like a one shot, and you were supposed to, you know, learn how to do without them. But it sounded like they're more ongoing, is it, is the program changed somewhat?
Not even.
Yes and no, so the, they did, FEMA has changed the kind, the rules around that. Because initially, it was a shared cost in the very beginning, first year would be 100% funded and it moved on. And now it's, now it's 100% funded for the three years. But with that, you know, you still have to go through the process, and they, they're still expecting the agencies to be able to find a way to fund the fire letters after that three-year period. That's the whole point of giving them all, and so I, I think on the other side of that is that, once you kind of know the FEMA system, once you, we've been successful three times so far with this, with the safer brand. And that's all due to our grant writing process and everything that we've been doing. So I think moving forward, we have a really good shot of getting it, because we've been through that process, we know kind of all the rules we have to follow with it and stuff like that. I don't know what FEMA's, you know, thought process is with, in regards to how many times they're gonna say, eh, we're gonna give it to you, and you've had your chance, kind of thing. I don't know, I got no idea how long we're gonna see it, but.
Any other questions? Continue, Denise.
Okay, so the salaries section there, we are estimating, so it's how the the IFF contract is up, I don't know if any of us speak to that.
Yeah, contract negotiations are gonna be occurring November, December, and January, because the IFF contract is up, as well as the SCI contract. So we anticipate there will be some raises that will be negotiated. And so we budgeted, was it 9%?
We, I mean, as they are.
No, just as.
We estimated based on, so there are some salary increases budgeted in here, whether they happen or not. We, we need to be conservative in our budgeting, meaning that we have to put the, some increases in there to expect that to come out of the contract negotiations that are happening.
So there's a 9%, you said?
We just put a buffer of 9%.
This is salaries to cover, so we don't, you don't have, you have a term on that yet, that you're a contractor, is it?
This is for all fire position, by the chief position.
It's over a period of time, yeah.
Typically, the contracts have been previous for years.
Yes.
And.
I have a question, Denise, is it possible with, to take, I've talked about this before, the litigation that goes on in this district and to categorize it in the departments, because it's not, we know there's litigation with the fire department. If we can categorize it in the different departments and break up their bills, I don't know if we can move that or not.
So the, the litigation that's pending right now is covered by insurance, so that's not a budget carry issue?
Okay, we don't know that.
We might, I might have some thoughts on that, when we get down to the suggestion, because of the administrative classification.
I think we were gonna discuss the administrative cost allocation, because right now, all of the, any legal expense, the retainers we pay, our, our attorneys that are retained for us, our all paid and admin, as well as any other, you know, special litigation that we have to do for human resources, which could be a leave, you know, there's, there's many reasons that we seek counsel. They are all out of admin, and I think through that overhead allocation discussion, we're gonna talk about what charges and admin we could distribute out in a more realistic way. There are some terms like, like attorney we have on retainer, that is gonna go, you know, it's hard to say, it's, you know, his bills are, it's just a monthly fee that we pay, so those will probably stay in admin.
Yeah, but recently, the, the, at least, at least lately, the biggest expense has been out of water, correct, because of the issue with the school dispute. So that's sort of thing, yeah, we could talk about that a little bit.
And there's a great deal of variability on what those legal things are gonna be, and give them on them.
Yeah.
Interactive processes with workers on whatever, like, because it's almost.
And it's a surprise, right? But we could, I mean, yes, there's definitely ways that we could do an analysis of what past costs have been, who they've been shared with, and do an estimate, you know, but that takes a lot of, that would take a lot of time. But I think that'll come out in the overhead, the subcommittee from the overhead.
Right, yeah, just, yeah, just, I don't wanna make, this isn't to be decided today, because we have a subcommittee working.
Correct.
On that.
In this budget, all legal costs are in admin.
Any questions? Continue.
Okay. So benefits, those are just, those are, essentially based on current benefit rates and retirement rates that are expected for next year. Then we go down to the supplies and services budget. I would say there is nothing extra here that we do not, I think, under 60930, small tools and equipment on page 14. The fire department wants us to purchase a gas protector. So I've outlined those specific things that are a little separate. But most of this is just, you know, putting in a CPI increase on these and looking at current rates, and, you know, you look at utilities and you can kind of get an estimate, how much electricity is gonna go up and all of those things. So I would say there is nothing extraordinary in the services and supplies category. Send me any questions you have.
Any questions?
So, yeah. Revenues, we're dedicating it on the down column, we've got costs on the down column.
Yes.
There's an added fee on top of what we charge people, right? So our expense really doesn't equal our revenue, what you have.
If we're lucky, it will equal a B and F zero. Most of the time, if people do not always pay their fire benefit, their, their bill, then it goes on a tax form, and we won't see it until the next year. So I would say, more often than not, the expense is more than the revenue.
Well, that you would have got a catch-up.
Correct, yeah. But that crosses the six years, so that's an interesting one. I, I was, so.
Okay, it's kind of hidden in the tax revenues, right? So we really can't. So if somebody, maybe it's.
No, when we, when we.
For, we really can't.
No.
That, that Aaron said, that 25,000 is from, we.
When we, when we get our property tax checks, they do separate out how much is for prior years' rebate payment, and we do post it to this for 3% of the rebate payment from.
Okay.
That includes what we get directly and what we get in profit tax.
Correct, yes.
Who gives the fee, it's like 10% or something, particularly with, right? Give us a low amount.
You're talking about fees for.
The administrative fee.
Yeah, administrative.
It's a hundred dollars for the first notice, and then if they miss that headline, then they pay a $200 administrative fee. So a percentage, I don't know what that, because it depends on what their bill is.
Any more questions on fire? No. Should be, oh, stop, sorry. But didn't bring the capital out, like, is that tying this CIP?
Yeah, so there was one project that we are giving forward for the CIP. There's one I listed before that did not get into the budget, whereas this whole, and so one did, which was this ballistic vest for active shooters. That was approved by RNI, and we did include it in the budget. So. And then there is the block interest payment for the chief vehicle, and then you can see the allocation of overhead for the fire department.
Continue to facilities resources.
And so you can see that we budgeted the higher 20%. Zero budget, sort of facility and resources, or it starts on page 18. You can see most of their revenue comes from their property taxes and a little bit from that toll rent. Again, the salaries and wages, we did work in a little buffer for potential SEIU increases, when that goes through negotiations. The benefits are using more estimates for the year rates. I would say that the biggest thing about that after our budget is some of these line items have been reduced, because we're doing a lot more work in-house, because we did increase a staff member this year. And just with David's skill set, we were able to, you know, that was part of our, our plans, was to reduce some of the outside, pushing some of the work outside. So you will see that mainly in, like, 6033B for encampments. That budget has been slashed pretty significantly, because most of any work with encampments is being handled internally. The ranch budget has been cut, because again, I may even speak to that.
Yeah, absolutely. So historically, in previous budgets, going back to previous budgets, the facility resource department has been a struggle deficit for years. When we went to Laffco, they noted it, they did our five-year review, we ate up 350 plus of the general fund reserves. And so when David was hired, you know, our mission when we sat down was changing the whole paradigm of how facilities and resources operated from a budgetary perspective. And so homeless and chemical cleanups, we were budgeting 50,000, 60,000, the ranch, we'd been budgeting at 50,000. We had 30 plus thousand for restroom cleaning, always clean, and most of all of those budgeted monies were contracted out. And so, when David was brought in, we started looking at, said, what can we do in-house? We have to stop with contracting so much. We brought on a third maintenance technician, and year-to-date, homeless and chemical cleanups, in previous years were 60, we're down to 7,000, 6,000, approximately. For ranch, we've spent roughly 10,900, which in previous years, we're in the 50s and 60s. We were waiting to get that third maintenance technician on, and we hired one, resigned, hired another, and it's finally stuck with us. So we just recently canceled all those contracts, so now we're doing all of our restroom cleaning throughout the district with staff. Uh, we just recently canceled all those contracts, so now we're doing all of our restroom cleaning throughout the district with staff. So with that, in order to get David to a balanced budget, we, we slashed a lot of those categories with the intention that our staff will be getting that for it. So he's got a very thin, he's always had a very thin budget because he's going into the, into the rent. Um, but now we've got a balanced budget, but he's on a shoestring budget for sure.
Yeah, and so, you know, um, something I take in note of in the past, so that. Uh, negative variance was like three hundred thousand over a period of three or four years.
Yeah, okay, so three or four years, so, yeah, so that was, like.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
On average, anywhere between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars, we were in deficit in that.
We're bringing that in to, you know.
Fingers crossed.
Okay.
But there's an ad hoc committee with um, Trucker's and Tom, Director Thomas, myself, um, David. And then we'll bring in an F F R P, we is on the kitty con, yeah, and so we're gonna start working out. How we can move forward with managing the ranch. We also have the forced health grant, the, we're awarded, we're anticipating twenty five implementation.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, for a health, we'll, we'll actually start this fall.
So that's huge for us, so, um. Uh, Mr. Pearson was pivotal in, in achieving that grant, and that's gonna help us uh, even more in the slashing of that. That's a big one to really.
Yeah, I think, I think what those grants are gonna do is be able to hopefully keep up with the service of the ranch at the level that the community is used to. Well, I, I don't anticipate a slashing our budget more than me, I just want to be careful, like. We're, uh, the grants are not gonna help us slash it, us more, we have slashed our budget for the ranch. Hoping that those grants can help us keep the ranch at a level that the communities used to, um. There are things we might have to say no to, um, during the year, um, trying to adhere and stick to the budget. Um, as we all know, emergencies do arise, those are things that we will come before the board and ask for a budget adjustment, where it's very clearly asked. And, and communicated that we, we, we would be dipping into reserves for, for those sort of events. Um, so, but our anticipation is a balanced budget for our.
Which is a first for us, certainly, Pierce.
Yeah, and I just wanted to highlight that and understand, you know, the, the years.
Yeah, and, and again, want this on record, kudos to David, um, David's really done a fantastic job.
I have a question, um, the homeless camps have they decreased?
They have.
Um, I was under the impression that the county was going to marry. And help with the cleanup and the expenses, is that, think of that, never happened or anything?
Yeah, it's typically county property, um, the rest of it's really on us, so. A lot of the areas in the ranch, things like that, it's been purely David's effort with the history who's going there and.
Yeah, I know, because I noticed that there's lost people in town that. Seem to be deprived of more, and I just, that's why I asked to live in St. Jason numbers.
I'm assuming so, we have less encampments and.
Yeah, we don't know, I can give his approach to self, however he's done it, uh, it seems to have lessened, I'm not involved in it day to day. I don't think we know exactly why it's less, but it is less, but I think. That we're seeing, you know, David's diligence and going on cleaning encampments and, and communicating that we're just seeing. Less encampments. I think it is, yeah.
And he's been working with the sheriff.
Yes.
Yeah, he's been working with law enforcement and sheriff pretty closely.
Yeah, I guess, you, I mean, I don't get into that question, but some, some of the accountants also. Involved because of their driveway, which tend, you know, had been used by, especially when pre, uh, I don't know. How that's going, but it seems like that's, maybe is Caltrans active and helping us, working with us on their side of the, uh.
I think so, David's been in contact with law enforcement, with Caltrans, and he's kind of working with all the departments, um, you know. On those dividing lines between C C S D property and county property, but he's been, he's done a good job communicating all of that. Which I personally reflect of, of the way we are today in terms of cost.
Any more questions on the, on the. He, he, yeah, he can ask a question. Well, I was thinking about public comment, actual public comment, uh, after we went through the, this, but it, this is an informal sort of situation, so.
Yeah, very specific clarifying questions, I play would be helpful. It's just, just so I, that I can understand, on, on page six. You, you indicate the organization charter position allocation, you identify a vacant position. And if you go to your two figures on page fifty six and fifty seven. It looks like that position has been filled. Since, because there's no maintenance technician vacancy listed there. But there are three folks identified under facilities, resources, maintenance technician. Previous budget, you had two maintenance technicians and one tenant.
So on page six, are we saying that that position is vacant or just that we added funding for acquisition?
It's funded this position, right?
Yeah.
So it's funded, but it's not vacant?
It is not vacant, we just filled it.
We built.
Just built, right?
Yes.
We're talking about that.
So I just, where is it saying it's vacant? Because I think on the.
Oh, it, it's, it's not, it, it, I would have expected to see a vacancy under the maintenance technician for the new. Uh, year, but obviously it's been. So maybe it would be help, it would help to clarify that it was funded and filled.
Okay.
So then, then actually.
Any, any public comments, is anybody watching on, on, online?
Yeah, we have two, two people online, but.
So just, there's any public comment, I'm gonna just.
Yeah.
Put your, put your finger over something, uh, we'll continue, please, please continue with the. I think we're on administration.
Going through administration, um. On page twenty three, um, so this one gets no. Uh, property tax money, so we have franchise fees, which is from the, um, mission. Country agreement, um, and that estimate, I can reach out to them and get an estimate of how much. You know, they think, so that's hopefully a real estimate, um, using some of their information. Um, the interest income, which I have kept really low, just because I like to budget conservatively, so. I don't want, even though our interest income or expecting to be higher, um, we didn't. Um, I don't have a real clear way to estimate it based upon people having been doing this, so I just did really low, it's not gonna. Hurt us any, if anything, we just have more money coming in, that will only benefit us in hand. So I budgeted really conservatively on the interest income, um, we do get a little bit of the radio vault rent, um. See some miscellaneous revenue, um, so that is two hundred fifty three thousand, uh, revenue for the admin department. Um, salaries, benefits, um, our insurance, it is, um, you know, large expense that we pay. Um, and. Trying to see anything that is like a standout. That, you know, just based on, you know, you do get estimates on certain, um, expenses going up. Um, like the Laffco and S C R A, which is our insurance, um. Our office rent is in there, thirty five thousand a year for that. Our meeting expenses is also a large expense, um, for, mentioned, um. Does anyone have any questions about the supplies and services? We've been, really, it's just standard. Expenses that we pay every year, updating.
Or suggestion, maybe, um. After our, um, wildfire debt, I'm reconsidering using A G P ever again. Could be the amount of money that they charge us, uh, over three thousand dollars. It may be time to look at, we have a big enough big screen TV here, right?
This is our, this is our customer.
Yeah, and, and, so you're gonna be taking, you know, zoom anyway, you won't be available in the same place, it would be available in my department, so. Yeah, that's, then, then, you're already going there, that's great.
Didn't want to announce it to A G P, but, um, but that has been a, uh, bone in our side. Since we got here, I don't know how much we spent on the A G P, um, it's obviously nice to have, be able to pull up the archives on slow spam, but it's. It's a cost that I don't think we should be bearing.
Well, it would be printed on the website, Zoom.
Yeah, it's on Zoom, it's on.
Yeah, it's already on the website.
Um, we're looking at, um, where we could put a big screen TV mounted on the wall. Or public comment, um, I don't necessarily like the aesthetics of this look, um, but. As I, I'm logged on to Zoom as we speak, and I was listening to the audio, and it wasn't bad, there's some other complications in terms of mics. Um, how, how we could integrate mics, um, so everybody in the hall could hear, would. Project a little more loudly on video, um, and directors. Lighting their lights, I'm sure that can be fixed with this simple lighting system, but we're gonna have to do a few trial, trial and error runs with it. Um, that's definitely the direction we're looking ahead.
Good, just on sale A G P. Because it is over, over thirty six thousand a year, right?
At least, and that's, that's not even that special needs and.
Yeah, yeah, specialty, I, um, and I would say that we are consistently looking at ways that we can. Uh, put cost on different contracts and stuff, they may not be highlighted in here just because. We are in a relationship with these centers, like Matt said, you know, we haven't had this conversation with the A G P, so. I mean, we're happy to take all of these suggestions, but we, and so I have budgeted for A G P, but we are. Definitely, if you guys have suggestions on different ways, we can look at cutting, um, costs, um. We, we are constantly trying to do that and, and operate a little more.
I have a quick question on the interest, um, interest of income, is that based on. Uh, the principle of that is the general fund cash reserves? All, all the general fund together, so it was, it all goes to administration.
Well, so.
I mean, it just does.
No, water and wastewater will get there.
That's another reserve, that's another plot, right?
Yeah, they'll have their own budget in their funds, yeah.
Those they have interest in too.
Yes.
Yeah, basically around in the searchers.
Yes.
David.
Why do we have a surplus?
Surplus.
A surplus, so, uh, because of the revenue that we are, um. Are, so, we, the overhead allocation is where we, um, charge out all expenditures to the other departments. Um, the way that it's, that it's written, if it's kind of the discretion of. The general manager and the district, um, do we want to allocate out those revenues to the other department, you know, basically reducing the expenditures? In the past, we've always kept those revenues in admin to help contribute to reserves or contribute to. Different expenditures, um, that may come in, litigation expenses, sort of thing, what, whatever could be coming in that we want to cover. Um, and so that the administrative department has, uh, a reserve balance. Last year, we, I did budget out those, the, the overhead allocation was less. The revenues, so the other departments, you know, kind of did that, so it's a year by year. Um, assessment of how we want to handle those revenues, if we want to keep them in the general fund, or do you want to. Include those in the overhead allocation, and I think through. Our discussion about the overhead allocation, we can change that if we want to, through the subcommittee and through the finance committee, if we want to change the way we handle. The revenue that comes into general.
Yeah, I, I really, I really think it's unfair, um, it should be a zero, we'll focus to it. Um, because what you're doing is you're basically taxing the other departments. And you're transferring monies from the enterprise funds to the general fund, which is illegal. You're not supposed to be doing that.
Well, we're charging them, we, you're allowed to charge them for the cost of service, so we are charging them for the cost of service.
When you're making a profit here.
So, but we also have facilities, like we have infrastructure needs in the general fund. So if we are consistently always not keeping a reserve, and I do think. Um, I mean, I have to go look at the government code, but a general fund is allowed to hold the reserves for their own infrastructure needs. So that means that's general fund would never have any sort of reserve to maintain. You know, the infrastructure which resides within the general fund.
But the general fund is supposed to get those reserves from the property tax and the center, their regular revenue.
Okay, well, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
The only general fund account that, I mean, fire and. Facilities and resources are the two general fund, cause centers that get property taxes. And historically, they have been operating in a deficit or a zero if we're lucky, so, um, the only revenue.
Can't take money from the enterprise funds for the general fund.
Well, this is, we're, we're talking about administration first of all, yeah, so you can't obviously take, take money from the enterprise fund for administration that. Is spent on the enterprise funds, that's the whole point, correct? I guess the question is, why is that extra two hundred and two hundred thousand?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, yeah, it's on fifteen thousand, actually, two hundred and fifteen thousand, uh. What, why is, again, which is, which is certain amount, which is more than the allocation that comes to administration from the, uh, enterprise funds? Why is that certain, what is the argument for that surplus? If it's legal, um. And I was, you know, I would think that's a question for our council, not for us to decide if it's legal. That's one thing too, I mean, if it's, uh, if we're, if we're stepping on thin ice. In terms of the government code and revenue, uh, revenue rules, and that's one thing, but if it's legal, um, I can see the argument for it. Yeah, because, because of the, uh, the administration needs reserves. Uh, we're getting into discussion here, but, um, it's, it seems to be a question of legality, one of the, you know.
What are you gonna do with money at the end if you have a surplus, two hundred and fifty thousand?
Doesn't reserves, yeah.
Well, it's, you shouldn't be doing that, you should be allocating it back to water and wastewater. And the other departments, you should not have a, a, a surplus that goes to the general fund reserves. That basically was taken from the enterprise fund. And, except, and it's like getting a loan, yeah, we should, we'll pick this up in the study.
I, I mean, I, again, I'm gonna sit with that before I respond to if. If that revenue that's coming in belongs to the, and, and I would want to read all the government code, I mean, this is the way the district has done. I mean, that, this is why the district has a three point, a three million dollar general fund reserve, so this is not. Like the last year, I, I think was the first year that I actually did allocate out that revenue. Amount to the, the, the enterprise funds in the allocation, well, and the other admin funds. I mean, the other administrative funds get a portion of our admin allocation too, so, right, like our overhead. So they got a cost savings there too, that is the first year that that's been done. So, uh, so I would wanna, I would just wanna think about that, um, my knowledge of it is that we are. Can allocate out all of the operating expenditures to the other funds through our overhead allocation. So that's not including the revenues, I, I would just, I would wanna do a little more research before I respond to say, does that revenue belong to the enterprise funds? I'm not so, I don't, I, I wouldn't, I would wanna answer that question in a later date after I did a little.
I think we.
I think you definitely need to look into that.
Just, just got a quick side issue.
And if, 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 if there was a legality issue, I mean, I would hope that someone would have brought it up in the past, like the legal counsel or the auditors, be more audited yearly. And like I said, this is not the first time we've done this.
But what's, what's the timing on the, um, deliverable of the ad hoc committee on the allocation of both of them? And administrative over there.
We were aiming at, we were aiming at.
Dubtails, uh, you can dovetail with this and with other things, but I think towards the. At the beginning of budget preparation for the following year, it's like November, I think we're thinking.
Well, no, we were gonna, I'd take a year on that, did I already, I think I already sent out. We're gonna start these conversations, um, right away about the overhead allocation. Also, I would like to say there's plenty of C I P products that we have put on the back corner. Allocation, also would like to say there's plenty of C I P projects that we have put on the back corner in the admin um. Departments that, I mean, we could have added that to it, and it's, but it's, so. That's my one thing too, is the infrastructure that we need to repair here in the admin department is very large. So it's not budgeted because, for instance, we, let's say, want to move um the admin offices or relocate the F and R building. You know, that budget, let's say, is six, seven hundred thousand dollars, that, then I will be presenting you with a. An unbalanced budget. And so in our mind, that two hundred and fifty three is going towards those future projects, that we have to save for them over a number of years. So, again, I would, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I think it's a conversation, I mean, they'll look into like the laws and the legal. You know, language surrounding that.
Yeah, I, I, I think the point is that the revenue that we're uh asking our. Citizens to pay for the water and for the wastewater are to go for those specific things. And that's what makes it difficult, and I understand what you're saying.
But these revenues are not related to the water and wastewater. Revenues, the revenues coming into. Um. The admin, the admin department are not related to water and waste, true.
No, 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 there are allegations, no, 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 I think that you're taking the money from those, and and you're allowed to do that. Okay, if in fact you've got items that you need to put in your budget, maybe that's what you need to do is put it in your budget. Certain things so that this comes out to zero, because if they need to pay for that, their fair share by allocation, and that's fine. But I think to have a two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh. Surplus. That you're then gonna put into reserves.
But I do think there's rule allowing us to build up our reserves.
Right.
I think there are, are limits around what we're allowed to build up.
Scott, Scott, you're gonna say. So the way, you know, and then I take an issue with the way we kind of work in capital expenditures.
Yeah, I have an issue with that.
But given that that's the way it's done, you could bring forward about a quarter billion dollars in C I P. Budgeted, take that to zero, and then. Depending on what happened during the year, either uh add in more or drop some. Yeah, so you have, I think you have some. Uh, budgeting wiggle, yeah, because we have, we have backlog products.
I mean, yes, I easily could, I mean, I cut over that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the C I P project. I have an issue with how we budget C I P projects, and I would prefer to budget them in the actual year we think that it's gonna get accomplished, knowing that. Um, you know, even with water and wastewater, they, you know, you'll see in wastewater, they have a surplus this year. And I'm not gonna say, oh, we're over targeting our residents and it's too much money, I'm gonna say we have a lot of infrastructure we're saving for. Right, and so that's part of the reserve conversation, what are our minimum and maximum balances, like we've had conversations around those too, and so there's some. Understanding that there are, which, they can do the research in, into that too, with that minimum maximum conversation, but. With the knowledge that we do have to, we have a dutyary responsibility to save for the infrastructure repair of our.
Yeah. And even if we budgeted for that, we didn't use that fiscal year, it goes into the reserve.
Yeah, well, it just moves forward, and you'll see in the final budget, the way, and this is what I have a problem with, the way we budget for C I P. Is right now everything's balanced and, and you know, wastewater has net income. Once I move forward, those uh encumbrance expenditures for C I P, everything gets plunged into a deficit. It, it, the way it appears here, um, I'm typically used to. Budgeting in, in a separate fund for C I P projects. So you're basically allocating reserves for loans or bonds or whatever funding to that, it's not in operations. Um, so it looks a little bit different, but that's, it's not the way that the district would budget.
Um, I want, given, given that we have uh so much to do on capital side, we're not making a profit. We're, we're just allocating funds toward things that need to be done. But.
Any more questions on this?
Yeah, any more questions? Let's continue to the um enterprise funds.
I have a question on, on, I'm sorry, the water fund.
You wanna do the, do the narrative first on the uh fund, and then? What was the question about?
My question is. In the budget. Is, there's nothing in here for the purchase of the S R four well.
It's, yeah, it wouldn't be budgeted, we're not there yet, yeah, we don't have a. There's, we don't have enough, we don't have any, we don't have any agreement in place, and we don't have any agreement, you know, so.
And there is money in there for the actual payments that we made um to. Uh, the school district yearly, which we make.
They said we're being sort of a status quo number.
Yeah, so there's around, you know, whatever we usually paid on the year.
Forty six, forty.
Forty eight hundred dollars is in the budget.
So we'll see if there is an agreement to come to fruition, there would be a budget adjustment, it will be probably before this. Budget is implemented.
That's how you will never.
We'd have to, yeah, because, yeah. There's no, it's not budgeted.
At least, oh, then just one last question. Ever thinking of finding a specialist physician?
No, that position's been eliminated.
Been eliminated, oh, yeah. I just wanted to.
Please continue.
Okay, um, so I also have the overhead calculation worksheet that you can see there on page twenty eight. Um. Then we move to enterprise fund summary, and so page thirty three brings us to the water funds. Um. The revenues are estimated based upon the B study that was done. Um, when you all approved the two eighteen a while back with our well, this is the last year of the set increase. And then in subsequent years, I think um the way that it's written, need to bring before increases of, of C I P amount, um. Or C P I, excuse me, C P I amount before the board, so um this year is the last year of those set increases that were agreed upon. Um. So. And then there's that availability, the water availability amount that is approved through property, a property tax assessment specifically for um. Uh, infrastructure projects, um. Salaries, wages, benefits, same as, um. Before, uh. We. We go down to page. Um. Thirty five, there is uh capital improvement projects that did make it into this budget. Um, through R and I, so those are listed there, it's not one hundred and forty eight thousand dollars for your projects. Um. And.
Okay, so, do we know more here? Money here.
It's already been budgeted, so that will be brought forward in the final budget.
Conferences?
Correct.
Okay, so that's gonna be about a million and a million one.
Correct, and that's what I was saying before, the way we budget the C I P is all of the prior, so this preliminary budget is everything that's budgeted for this current year. Or for this new year, and so in the final budget, I have to bring my special sheet forward saying, here is all the projects that were not, were approved, but have not been completed. Now, those are moving forward, so this budget is going to be in a big deficit, um. At, at the final budget.
Okay, and the six hundred thousand dollars was added just recently.
Correct.
Didn't make it there.
No. That will be in the fourth quarter, and that is, we just thought.
And then that'll immediately go to a conference, which you've attached up. And balance out everything, yeah.
Yes. Not a lot of the way we represent capital project, but again, that's something we can probably talk about a little bit later.
And yeah, and. Well, you can continue, please.
Um.
But, but you know.
Yeah. Anyone have any questions?
I mean.
And the water project currently pays for the over, admin overhead for W R F. Funds, I don't know why, but it does.
Well, that's, yeah, I know, I was gonna ask about that, but I noticed that's been done in the past too.
Yes.
Yeah, that was decided, yeah, when I was on board.
And that was the way we, I don't know what the rationale was for that exactly.
I don't know if the W R F has its own money, but.
Well, I. Director Farmer would say we were cheap.
It was what?
We were cheap.
Oh.
I believe it over there, between the W R F, so maybe W R F was better.
And I mean, all I can say is water reserves are held um in aggregate of any W R F and water, so it, you know, it's all coming out of the same.
One, one, yeah, one, one font, right?
Yes, correct, right.
I get the question, then the question then becomes, is the revenue that is specifically earmarked for the W R F. Actually uh producing the, the surplus. Which is, you know, you use a large surplus in the W R F budget. Uh, but that's partially, isn't that due a lot, largely due to the fact that it's, it's um administrative allocation, the shift of the water?
I mean, that is a part, so if you look, so the next one is W R F, we're anticipating a hundred and ninety thousand dollar surplus.
Yeah.
Um, but also in the capital fund on page forty two, we're anticipating, oh, sorry, page forty three. Uh, wait, forty four, sorry.
No.
Um, and anticipating, we did approve, or R and I, we have a hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of capital projects. Um, so that surplus to pay for those capital projects, I can't say. That. We, the utility manager did increase um some of these W R F expenditures, on that assumption that we may be running. The plants and. Just.
So, so when, and we're jumping into W R F, that's so gary this, most money.
Yeah, I mean, if anyone has any question about water or W R F.
So, is it true that the change, one significant changes here is that instead of this surplus going into and operating reserves. It's not going to the capital, that, that is, is that new this year? Capital projects? Because we had.
For the W R F.
W R F, yeah.
I would just say there, I, I wouldn't say it's going into it, I would say that there happens to be enough. Net income to cover the capital expenditures that were funded for the year. Um, so, yes, I would use those funds before dipping into reserves. Um. So.
Sure.
You may ask a question.
Yes.
So on page, are we on page four? I think I will.
Sure.
We got on page where it's from.
Okay, so on the budget, uh, hundred description, so S V C miscellaneous under. Initially, twenty five thousand maybe.
So we have just a standard budget of the twenty five thousand dollars, and then there's some H two O innovation bound pay training. Of worth twenty thousand dollars that is budgeted for that, and plus the forty five thousand, um. As far as what's in the. Miscellaneous, I'd have to pull it up, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head what's in that. Um, professional services.
I notice in, in, in the W R F, um, or W R F category. Uh, there's more language um that pops up like on page thirty nine, S W F capital. And I noticed.
So much, I thought I got all of them.
There, it's still, it's still flow around.
I know.
And then on. In the account summary, uh, there's a terminology, I mean, we're, we don't see the whole thing, but um. The, except these items, like solid wages, water sustain, sustainable, or sustain operations. That's probably just in the computer, all the line items have that whole language in them, so. It might be, it's, 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 it's simple to take care of, I mean.
Try and see if I can change those.
Using people trying to go back to. That's what we're up to. Open up that whole, you know, but. Anyway, um, any more questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, W R F cap. Is just one, four, and forty five.
Yeah.
It's misleading here. Having a positive one of ninety thousand dollars, you'll be that's a negative. That's all. Uh, it's because you don't have a revenue line, you don't have.
Yeah, uh, I don't know how to, I mean, this is not the first time, uh, because the capital. Uh, when it's, when it's being spent out of reserves, I don't have revenue to move in there, I was. Uh, borrowing money, I put a loan, you know, revenue line item in there, so um it is something I can discuss with the auditors, like if I could budget somehow, reserve. Amounts to, to make that zero, um, but.
Maybe just a note in your narrative.
Okay.
That that's really a negative, not a positive. It's price.
Reserves, money going in and out of reserves is always a bit confusing, because when it goes into reserves, it's, it's an expense. It's a negative, and then when it comes out of reserves, it's a positive, it's the opposite of what people tend to think. It's expenditure item when you put it into reserves, right? Well.
No, it's just, um, anything that is a, so if you look at, I mean, the only department we have right now that. Is contributing to, well, there's two, but if you look on page forty one. And this one says report surplus, that is deficits, about hundred and ninety surplus. Uh, is going into reserves. So that's indicating that there's a surplus, so the net income is, or the income is higher than the expenditures. Um, it's truly just, because if you look at, okay, so income. Uh. Revenue total on page forty is a, is a positive number, right, it does not have the parentheses around it. If you look at the expenditures, it's a, it's a positive number, so it's just the way that our software shows it, there's not, um. If you saw the parentheses around the bottom number, that would indicate a deficit, meaning that we would be taking out of um reserves. Uh. So it's truly just the way the software presents it, and then in the accounting world, you can get really. Debits and credits, like is an interesting term, because it depends on what sort of. Not that, or ability, or, you know, so I don't wanna confuse that issue, this is truly just. The way the software presents their revenues and their expenditures, um.
Rather than like Google entry accounting.
But I, no, I, I, I do understand that under the capital, because there's no revenue to offset it. It's just because of the way, it just looks like a positive number.
Yeah.
Uh.
So, any other, yeah?
But I can, I.
Any other question on the W R F? Move on to wastewater. I don't time, term of time to discuss C I P, so.
Uh.
Waste dollar then.
So wastewater, um, the revenue, it's all there, um, I, I pointed out earlier, there's a little bit of property tax money that goes to the wastewater fund. For their discounts for loan, housing. Uh, or, sorry, well, the loan, um, grades, discounts for wastewater. Um, salaries and wages are in there, um. And we're really conservative with how we are budgeting all expenditures. Um, while also taking into consideration the appropriate, um. You know, increases that, you know, such as our electricity or different vendors communicate with us. Um. Standard like C P I increases thirty five percent, if you don't know. There is one little capital outlay with, which is contributing towards a fuel tank computer replacement for um wastewater, um. There were no C I P projects for wastewater this year, just because they have their hands full with the uh. The S S T project, so really that's, you know, and the influence, influence line project and stuff, so that we're just. Kind of causing them and giving staff time to really kind of get those S S T projects done, um. We can have our payments while we're. We have our payments for the wastewater. C O P bonds. And their admin overhead allocation. And we're anticipating a surplus of approximately hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
Um, any questions? I don't know, we can, we can continue with the, um, charts and then C I P list, C I P list, I think is, and we, we have a, I have a number of questions about it, and other pictures probably do too, so we, if there's nothing there, it's, um, explain about the, um, organization chart.
Yeah, let me just, let me just go over it really briefly, this is our most updated salary schedule, which was approved, um, in January. Um, so there's a, you can see here, like, uh, general manager mentioned, going through negotiations, paying, and so anytime those are, um, are completed, that this will be updated and brought before the board, that's standard. Um, and then the power list is just showing any changes, and so, um, if, my eyes are, my eyes are going a little cross-eyed with this, but the maintenance technician is the only, um, additional um, position that is in there, any other changes, like we did change the, the finance manager is no longer in position, it's ordered to the administrative permanent manager position, all, all the changes were done last year, so they're not reflected here, so change, um. And then the two different org charts, so this will have both prepared, uh, and not ranked well, so I don't know if you guys, the current year org chart. I'll make a note of that, can you guys see it?
Oh, yeah, the C I P one. They changed the.
Mine printed like this.
Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Yep. Right.
Um, so we'll make sure to get that current year chart to while.
Yeah.
And this will put it aboard, but, um, we have a new presentation, trying to get it as as readable as possible, I think was, you know, what we're hoping for, so those are just those handouts to explaining our organizational structure. And I'm trying to get you your answer about the, um, professional services, but it's, if I have to, I'll let you know. Um. Okay, so then the C I P schedule, this is that's the debut of the newest version, so any feedback, comments, it's been talked about, reviewed, looked at many, many, many times, but sometimes the updates, you know, like, I can miss something or we catch something, so please, um, let me know if you have any questions or if something's not clear.
Any questions from the committee first?
On the C I P?
On the C I P list, maybe on the, on both what's in it and also just the, also format, because the format is, is the, the new thing.
The new format, so I would like to say anything with a B is budgeted currently in this current fiscal year, anything with a B. Anything with a one and they're, they should be in bold, are things that are in the budget that that are, that we're asking for in this preliminary budget.
Okay, so. Say that again?
Okay, so anything listed on here with a B are things that are currently in the twenty three, twenty four budget, they are budgeted. Anything that I'm asking for in this preliminary budget is going to be with a one, so if you look under the fire department project, we can see ballistic vest for active shooter, it's listed as a one, and the fifteen thousand is in bold. That means I'm asking for it in this budget. So again, this is me trying to communicate the best way I can, if you see that it's confusing or new changes, I can definitely write something, um, one thing I would like to point out, and I didn't know really how to do this, is if you look up on line eleven, the Beth Hall Sound System, we have a budgeted amount of twenty thousand dollars. So we are asking for thirty thousand more in this preliminary budget, because all of the, um, folks that we think getting back are hired, and so under E, additional budget request, I have thirty thousand dollars highlighted, and so the fact that it's bold, it's me saying, like, I, that is a request within this preliminary budget. Yes.
Yes, it's me. I have a question, there are those like this, I have you. My question is on page sixty four, the demolition of the Van Heelman Freck House, and then half of it is a three and the other half is, um, in the, um, where did I see it? It's in the, um,
Please.
It's in the project. And it's a two. On page sixty one, and then on page, uh, sixty four, it's divided up fifty thousand in two different categories, two different numbers.
So they should both be a three, I'll switch.
They should both be the same.
They're not, Tom, they're not. They're not, they're two different.
I'll switch to three, and the water line should be a three.
Yeah, why, why? Is the water department, and why, why are these departments absorbing the demo? And why isn't it being done as a B? Or have the permits been issued, because it's really.
I mean, that's, so that would go to R and I, they're the ones who discuss this list and determine the priority. So, I mean, um, I mean, so, I'm sorry. John, and you. I hate you, it's not making the decision for long.
It's gonna be all wrong, wrong, and get rid of that half.
Well, there's some staff who believe it could be an asset later on down the line in that area for W R F operations. So we're not exactly sure what we're going to do with it, as long as it's, we debated around there. We feel comfortable leaving it as is until we can find a purpose for it, you know. In the hierarchy of several things that we have to do in the district, it's categorized as that. Prior degree.
Then why don't we put a, put the fence along it? If it's not, I'm sorry, it drives me a little off to say something so poor condition.
Yes, I guess, I guess keep it, should be consistently a three, at least do that.
Yeah.
It's been there for years, Tom.
Well, there was other stuff for yours too.
I guess.
Yeah, I feel like when that discussion.
Yeah. I got a question, I got a question, I got, uh, I think, I think there's a, there's a need. Now, now, we've discussed, at least sort of explaining, explaining some of these columns. We really do need something in writing, uh, that goes with this table to explain, well, two things, I think, um, that are not explained, one is the priority designations, what exactly do they mean? Um, budgeted in the, when you say current fiscal year, it's, it's the year before the budget, as we figure, you can't have to start by that. Um, number one, priority to be budgeted in twenty twenty four, twenty five, and then two and three are a little bit murky. Uh, but I noticed that, uh, I've been looking at the F and R minutes, and they have, um, categories, um, currently, basically clarify these categories, and this is something I shouldn't put here. Uh, two is important but non-vital for twenty twenty four, twenty five, which was suggested it could make a cut for in a budget adjustment at some point during the year, and then three is pure, just future needs, not, not expected to be budgeted until at least twenty five, twenty six, so we need something to kind of clarify the timetable for these uh, in, in, in the budget presentation, and, you know, somewhere along around notes, for instance. The other thing I think, I, I am mystified by a couple of these columns. Uh, I think I know what's going on in column A, uh, but it doesn't spell out what that means, you know, the, the, the F Y, the fiscal year is a designation on some of these, is that when the item was first budgeted?
When the project was approved.
Yeah, first budgeted, yeah, that should be explained, so there's, so, um.
You're missing some entries there too.
Well, no, we're not budgeting.
Your fire department, you've got a B and a one, and you've got no fiscal year.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and it's a lot of research for me to go back and try and find out when year that it was, so I'm trying to.
I mean, it's not, it's, it's not a crucial thing after all, it's, you don't want to make a lot of impression, I don't even need it, but it's there.
I mean, I could take it out, that would make me very happy, but.
I want something real, really, you know, bug for this kind of information, I don't, I don't see, I don't see any, but it's just kind of confusing to see these numbers and that, I haven't explained. Um, the, um, yeah, and then the, the additional budget request, it confuses me a bit, because uh, let's say, there's two pages here, one is the, under, um, the, uh, the first item, pardon, the electric vehicle charging station, sorry. It has project estimate twenty two thousand, three hundred seventy two, and then additional budget request twenty one thousand, six hundred sixty nine, which is for twenty twenty four, twenty five, right?
No.
No. Okay. Um.
But it's not, it's not highlighted. So I, I have to be careful, because I can't have like ten different columns on here, so I was using, um, taking the Beth Hall Sound System as an example, we are requesting more money for that project. I think this is a good avenue to read that request, because we're looking at C I P in the budget as whole. I, I couldn't, could bring it forward as a separate budget adjustment request at a different board meeting altogether, if I, if, if we wanted to do it that way, we increased, uh, what I'm trying to show here is that we did have an electrical vehicle charging station project up to the twenty two thousand dollars. Subsequently, when we had to move it and everything else, the board approved another budget line item for twenty one thousand. I think it was important to show that there's, you know, two different, that there was an original request and then a subsequent request to increase it. If you don't think that that is needed, then I, then we could do it that way. Um, so the Beth Hall Sound System, and there's one more in here, I think water, we can look through it, someone's asking for an increase to a generator, I think it's water. Whereas it's already been approved, it's a project, but estimates are coming in a lot higher, um.
Pump station, yeah, brewery grass pump.
Yeah.
Right.
So, um. Again, that was me trying to decide the best way to communicate that, I, again, I could just completely take it out of here and bring it forward as a separate budget request, but it is budgeted in the preliminary budget, just because this is where we are in the process and not trying to and, and trying to be efficient with our time and our meeting requests and other things.
So, so, yeah, I, I, I think this is something we dealt with in notes. In, in notes, explaining the, the column, because we, we don't want to make another column, but we do need to, so the thirty thousand, for instance, the bulk is thirty thousand, does that mean the total project's going to be fifty thousand? Correct. Okay, let me see, that, that does make, there's a lot of that, we have to kind of explain everything. Uh. Somewhere of that, for instance, in, um, on, on the electric vehicle charging station, the line, uh, column, uh, which is with K, is the sum of D and E, because it's not the sum of D and E for the best all sound system, but this would be.
Because I wasn't going to do that until it's approved.
Yeah.
I didn't want to add it together until it's approved, because I didn't want to make that assumption that y'all would approve the thirty thousand dollar budget. Once it's, once it's approved, then I would, I would make that column K equal that fifty thousand. That, that is my rationale, is I didn't want to make the assumption that you guys were going to approve this thirty thousand dollars.
So. It, it might be that the, the ones that are not bold-faced, um, in column E, I wonder if that should be there? There's something that, way it can be incorporated somewhere else. It's, it's a different, you're, you're talking about something different, talking about something that was approved. Right, passport approved. I don't know, but it goes.
I, I mean, I could just include, like, in our electric vehicle charging station, I could include in column D the forty thirty thousand, nine hundred and forty one, and not have it on the record that it, you know, had a subsequent budget adjustment, um.
Hi. This is up to, I mean, you know, obviously, uh, the committee has to kind of decide.
Yeah, we are all, the committee was the creator of this document, so if you want to change that, I feel like I could just change that in here.
To me, to me, if you want to sign an additional budget request, if it's about something that is being requested at this point, but not approved, maybe that's the only thing you should have in that column, anything that's been approved, put it back in column E, that's my.
Is this a lot of audacity?
Uh, this is actually, this is kind of us, I mean.
Yes.
It's a finance issue.
I, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Um, if it's unapproved within additional budget price, it's already been approved, just add it to E hat.
Or D or G hat. Yeah. And I don't know if you need, then I don't need the bold facing, but, um, it's, uh.
Yeah, I can think about.
Yeah. Um. The one, uh, the ballistic vest for active shooter response gives a fifteen thousand, it's a bold-faced project estimate, and it's a one. It's going to be, going to be budgeted in this budget.
It's in the preliminary budget request, I will, and I can, I will write a page before this.
But this thing, I, and then current year activity, current year would be in this case twenty twenty three, twenty four, like crap, okay, that, that might be something that's, um, worth spelling out. Especially to get closer to the, the new budget, the new budget period. Uh. And I, I had one comment on a particular item, my question about a particular item in W R F, uh, which has been, which has been budgeted, where's it, um, for a long time, yeah, on page sixty seven. Um. Future permanent modification of W R F's trailer field station. Uh, it's been budgeted for, I think, several years, two, three years now at least.
Yeah, ten years.
It's in B.
It's in, it's in, it's ranking B, but, uh, how does it affect it if we, um, go with, uh, generally with this judging?
Yeah, that would be a Jim question.
The two question I've never been, we have, and is there any, is there any plans to actually do this this coming fiscal year? No, I'm not, it's a serious question, because we're, we're reading.
When I do ask them specifically, like, are these things still on here? Because there, there's a little bit of, you know, I think maybe the old thought pattern was just put everything that I want on here, get it approved.
Yeah.
And then they sit for years and years, um. Like to be a little more logical about it, and like, even if, yes, I want to do this, like, it keeps clear, and we, you know, there is a need to pre-plan for that, right? He's, he's saying he needs it within, and we, um, you know, the next eight years, but it takes a good four to five years to actually get the fire engine, so we got to start talking about it now, but we didn't want to, and R and I approved the, the, the concept of needing this fire engine, but we didn't want to budget for it, because it would look like we're in a deficit, two million dollars. So I think in the past, they would have just put it on here, but in a def, it would have shown as a deficit. So I think we just want to be a little more thoughtful, I would like to be a little more thoughtful, like, let's only budget for things that we think are going to get done in the next, you know, two to three years, or if the planning process takes a year, yeah, go ahead and put it on there, but, but we're going to get, you know, the construction to be done in two, three years.
I have Jim on the line, um, can you hear us, Jim?
I can, can you guys hear me? Am I loud and clear?
Dark. Okay, we, we had some questions on the C I P list. Future permanent mob of W R F for trailer field station, transfer tanks, piping, and spill containment, and a loading pad. How does the potential of Z L D affect that C I P project?
So, uh, Z L D would completely eliminate those areas. We would still need, um, Brian Holding Tanks, which we currently have. Um, but as far as the piping, the turnaround area, and the fill station for the trucks, um, those would be eliminated with the Z L D component.
But since that will come to fruition, we're still budgeting. Yeah, there's a legend for this, that's, and I can see the, uh, point of having in the budget, it's just, um.
Yeah, it's, because if you don't do that, I'm going to have to do something different, spend money for Z L D, right?
If, if we, if Z L D comes to fruition, yes, then, then eventually it'll cost something for the permanent.
Yeah, it may not, we may get a grant for a load, but we're still going to.
Correct.
So, leaving that door of capital, there's any, there's problems today.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys.
Um. Oh, anyway, in, in, but David, yeah.
Yeah, so. I get. Column K. For all departments except for. Um, because basically, if it doesn't get done this year, you're going to come back. It's in K or.
I mean, is it L or?
Yeah.
Basically.
K.
K is divided. K is divided. There's either J or L, I'm talking about. This wasn't the title of the column, what's the title of the column?
Project to name of budget.
See, that's L.
We changed. Or minus K.
Oh, but you know, it's different on page sixty-three.
Fifty-nine, I'm on the page fifty-nine.
I might, I might have to.
Oh, you're right.
I'll do that.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, please.
All right, so for most of it, it's all going to be covered or all used in cover. But what's your? Is the fire truck, the water tender, and all of that other stuff there, that is a two?
No, I should keep that up. That was put in there because it was, they were a lot.
Okay.
So I, I gotta take those numbers out of there. Thank you. We decided not to.
That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Any other questions? Um. Move on actually, well, the questions are good, public comments. Uh.
No public comment.
No public comment. There's.
Okay, we like, it's definitely, I would like to hear, I would like to hear about. Rearranging. That, and then your idea also, Scott, and you think there's a better way to use capital improvement budgets at that end of the year? Well, you were headed on your simplifying this process?
Uh, that's, that's more like an individual, you know, kind of by, I don't, analysis. Oh, here we go, not interested. I talked to Ms. Fritz, and we're going to look at a new process for how we budget first down. Those four. Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, you ever mentioned it, uh, you talked about a little bit before. I mean, it could explain in, um. Is, is, you know, as concrete as possible, what, what's the alternative to be on, well, rest of your.
Well, my alternative would be to have a capital improvement project for each fund. So, so right now, when you look at. Fire department, there's, you know. We're working, and when we're doing the operating budget, it's my, it's my thought that when I run a, a, a report for the fire department. It should be our operation, which is our current year revenue, current year expenditures. It gives you an adding, um, this is how much it costs to operate. I think that the capital expenditure should be seen in a different fund tied to butter. And whether that is funded through reserves, or whether it's funded through a loan, or whether it's funded through bonds, or whether it's funded through a grant. That money should be moved over to that capital expenditure fund indicating that. And I think it's a clear way to distinguish, um, you know, operations should just, should just be separate, right? We knew it's wrong, and I do have these conversations, if you go through it in the finance folder, yes, this is kind of a way that it's to take, um. Um.
Sorry.
Wait, keep talking. Um, so, uh. It's a little bit cleaner, keeps things, uh, I think, um. For someone who is just looking at my totally reports out there will say, um, when I first. Applied for my job here, I said, well, when you're in a deficit, why, like, where do you get the money from? Because the reports that are out on the website look like we're in a big deficit every year. They are, they're planned reserve expenditures, or they may have some grant funding, so it's misleading to me. Um, as, not misleading, I mean, it is accurate, but it's, it, it doesn't, it doesn't really tell the whole picture. And it doesn't tell that, no, we're actually planning for these expenditures. We're planning to take them out of our reserves. Um. And, which is, is fine, that's what reserves are for, but it kind of makes it look like in our operating fund that we're. Um, and wastewater is a perfect example. We have all of our, the, the C O P money coming in there, it's millions of dollars a year. But it's, it's not really operating revenue, right? I feel like it should be separated.
Yeah, this is, this is kind of what the, um, and some committee has been looking at, helping, looking at, right, in the, uh.
The long-range plan.
It's on capital, capital budget, yeah.
Yeah, we had talked about that, it was like, I think it is part.
It's part of the conversation. But also, we're not positioned to switch horses.
Yeah, and there are, like, so, for example, here's a perfect example, F and R right now, like, Pro's no longer is a department. Um. So for those that remember, Pro's have a designation of a department sixteen. You're still going to see a department sixteen when I do those roll forwards, because I'm running the state park out of there, I'm running, um. The, uh, restroom, so I'm running their capital projects out of there. And so I'm planning on keeping that from sixteen, and that's where all those expenditures are running out of. And so you'll see facilities and resources, which is the department O two, and you'll see their operations, and then you will see sixteen has those. Um. Capital projects. So, and that's kind of, and our W R F does the same thing, they have the operations and the capital projects. If there's two separate funds, to me, that's clearer and it's a better, um, representation.
Can I ask a question? I mean, um, is it possible? To maybe, um, give us some idea, like the skate park, there's numerous, there's donations, there's the council, there's set aside accounts, there's expenses. We don't actually know where we're at. If, if it could be sort of itemized, a little bit more clear clarity in that area.
Those are C C S D funds at the moment. They will only become C C S D funds when we, um, get the grant money, but. In order to absorb those funds, whether they transfer those funds over to us, so we can't budget or account for them as if there aren't funds, they're not, they're state charges. Running, running through the Cambridge, Cambridge Council.
Yeah, so when we have contract, when we execute contracts, I, um, send them an invoice, and they, um, send me money for that contract. But if the contract, you know, is a long-range contract, I put it in a, um. Like an asset account, so like revenue collecting in advance kind of account. But then when we actually are spending that money, I take it out of there, and then you see the revenue. I, I do have presentations on how much money we've taken in, how much money that the district has, and they do, and they do have that, um. Uh. It, it's definitely not reflected here on the C I P list. I don't have funding sources on the C I P list, that would just be way, way too confusing. When I am budgeting, when I am giving the encumbrance roll forward. I could see if I could delineate that, and, and I think it is, like, I do have a separate revenue account for anything brought in by Cambridge Community Hospital. I do have, um. Yeah, so I could, I could look into that, but it's also going to have money for the rest of the project.
Yeah. Uh, there's not for the questions on, for the poll comment, because it brings back the discussion motion and, for, and recommendations, uh, that we'd like to make, I. I'll entertain a motion, uh, to incorporate this, I think. Hopefully, incorporated to our consensus, or just to our consensus, uh, that we recommend going forward in terms of, uh, both in terms of the narrative. Which should be included in it, um, changes that would be made anywhere, um. Adjustments to the formatting of the, uh, the presentation in the C I P list and so forth. I would suggest, to sort of, to focus this a little bit, I don't want to stay here too long. Um, I would suggest the things that, that needs to occur to me as, um, need, need needed is a, um. Kind of working back into the C I P list. A, uh, set of notes or explainer or some more explanatory, um, key, uh, on two items. One is the. Um, it's the columns, uh, and what they represent, um, you know, to get rid of some of the confusions we've, we've noted here, for instance, current. Additional budget request, for instance, uh, column A, that sort of thing. Um. A, um. Explanation of the priority coding. Uh, so that's clear that B means budgeted in the current fiscal year, not the budget, not the proposed fiscal year. One is that is a priority to be budgeted or to be budgeted in the, in the new year. Uh, two is, is, you know, possible, possibly, um, due for, for funding in the new year. And then three is just future needs. In other words, that, basically what's spelled out in the minutes. In the minutes of the, uh, F and R meeting, April fifteenth meeting.
R and I.
R and I, so, R and I, exactly. I would suggest that be added to the notes, too. Uh, and, um.
The notes are, I was going to do like a cover page before, like. We'll get into this.
Cover page would be great.
Yeah.
Cover page would be great. Um, another suggestion I would have is in the narrative, um. There's, among my frustrations with these budgets is that there's no, the, under the new system, under the Tyler input system, there's no, um, history. Um, you know, where, how this budget compares to the last one in terms of revenue expenditures. Uh, I would think that that would be really good to include that in the narrative for each of the, each of the accounts.
In the final budget, there is a presentation that looks at prior years. It, it's more of a summary level, though, it's not. Um, but that's in the final budget. It's hard to do now because I'm still in the current year.
Yeah, and you have to compare it. I mean, I just have this orange problem, of course, but.
Right now, it, but, um, but it's, like I said, it's at the summary level. It's not like at the line item detail level.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't talk about that. I'm talking about the summary level, just, just the general overview, like we were talking today about what's new. What changed, what is changing, um, and why, basically, in a general, in a general way.
Yeah, so there are two things. There is a summary, like Tyler report, that is at a summary level, but that is included in the final budget, not in the preliminary budget. Um, and then typically, in the past, which I excluded from this, because I, I was told that this is my process, and I could, you know. You know, there's certain parameters I have to, but, um, there was a line item budget request report.
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah. I took that out, because I didn't think it was very value-added, and it's just not really the way we budget. If there's something specifically someone is wanting, it is. Sectioned out in, you find it.
Yeah.
Of it.
I absolutely agree.
I agree with that.
I mean, maybe it was a separate spreadsheet.
It confuses.
Yeah.
It just, yeah.
So I put that out, um, so, but that summary level, and I did run the summary report to see. But it was confusing, because I'm not done with the school year yet, so the numbers don't even, aren't accurate, so I didn't want to put it in, but it will be in the final budget.
Okay, if it's in the final budget, that's, yeah, I think the thing that, the main thing I was focused on was the C I P list and the, uh, it's clarifying. Uh.
Yeah.
Having a cover, a, a cover sheet, or, you know, an introduction.
A narrative.
And there, because that, that, I know at least a couple of board members, um, are a little bit of that.
Yes.
So.
Oh, yeah, I kind of forgot about it as I was putting this together, but yes.
Any other suggestions, any other?
Then just to clarify, timing-wise, when, when does the narrative start to take place? Um, is that the presentation in the, the final?
Yeah, so I mean, if this is approved today, I will start working on it right away to make those changes, because I'm bringing it before the board. On June.
June twenty.
Twentieth, and so my staff report is due next week, so.
Narrative.
It'll be done. The whole narrative and everything, it'll all be done by next week. I have to get the staff reports.
Okay.
So, I have already started looking at it, um, so. And these changes will be incorporated.
So do I have a motion now?
Yeah, so, so moved.
Basically, talking about, talking about, um, uh, clarifying, uh, clarifying, um, yeah, cover, cover sheets. So, which, which, to the C I P that covers the column explanations. Uh, also, I think one other add on that, I'll add it if it's, if it's acceptable. Um, the additional budget request should reply, should infer that, that column to only to stuff that's being, being requested.
Yeah.
In the new budget, rather than stuff that, that was, that was requested and budgeted already. That's what's, that was my confusion.
Do you, do you want me to read the notes I have?
Hmm.
Do you want me to read the notes that I have?
Yeah.
Question today?
I, I think. I think we don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. That, is there a second?
Uh, the only other thing, I don't like the D H P. Research the, uh, surplus in the, uh, cabinet.
Yeah, there's the legal. Yeah, the legal, yeah. Okay, so there's, we're basically talking about the, um, the ex- explainer, explainer of the priority list designations. The, um. Changing the, um, uh, budget request, making sure that, that item's clarified, and also change things that are best in the future budget. Uh, it's explaining the column generally in the C I P list. Investigating the legality of, um, current system of having a surplus in administration. And this one. And, and.
You said priority, priority.
Yeah, priority list, yeah, okay, so, and, and, uh, just a second, so, it's a real. Uh, Ms. McCann.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Gerald.
Hi.
Karen.
Hi.
And the recommendations pass forward as it's built up. We have, we can, I think we can get through, we got about fourteen minutes or so. Uh. Get through the next item. Uh, pretty quickly, uh, this is the, uh, updated investment policy, and, and I think the, what's presented to us, uh, has redlining. With the changes that were made, uh, after our discussion last month. So Denise, you want to just give a quick run out of this, that I, that's really, that's really text.
Okay, um. So, sorry. My, I inform you, is this is the investment policy, which we discussed before. Um, and that, um, I made all of the changes that were recommended by the committee, uh, um, at the last meeting. And Karen and I met, and I incorporated all of her, um, changes. I think she's missed her calling as like a property editor, because it's really great. Um, that, that it, um, and I also got the question answered from our investment advisors, which was a big question. Um.
So.
For the five-year.
Yeah, the five years.
Yeah, he said the government put only allows investments of the five-year situation. We do not have any investments longer than five years. It will require explicit instruction by a board to authorize such an investment. So I think even when on our summary pages, when it says there's a ten-year bond or whatever, there's probably only five years left in mind. If we bought into it with only five years left. Makes sense, like, if a ten-year bond, that's the title of it, but, but we don't, they're not holding it for more than five years, but, um.
This is, this is in page seventy-seven at the top, right? That's, that's sort of key passages. Maximum maturities. I believe it is.
Oh, now they're five years from the.
Yeah.
Or, um.
So I think that the discussion was around that statement, and then our summary report, you know. Or if there was a different question, I can tell you.
Yeah, it, it makes sense to me, the way it's written, the way it's written now, it's, um. When you have the flexibility, you have to.
Yes.
To have more than five years out for the repayment, um, but it has to be, it has to be matched to a, uh, specific cash flow, and it must be approved by the.
By the board. And it's, it's here, and you just have our nice policy.
Right.
Basically all.
Yeah, I, um. I don't have any questions. Oh, Karen.
On page seventy-seven, in the last paragraph. Under item. Number fifteen, internal controls. Last paragraph, in the second line, there's a reference to a senior accountant. Does that position exist?
That was eliminated, wasn't it?
Can you? Yeah, it's limited, it's eliminated in the, in the paragraph above. Uh, uh, on page seventy-seven. The, the, the last paragraph under internal controls, hence the investment portfolio and all related transactions. Second line, there's reference to a senior accountant. Does that position?
No, we just missed that one.
Yes, uh, so that needs, that will say.
Finance.
Finance.
Are reviewed and balanced to appropriate G L accounts by the finance manager?
Yeah.
Yeah, the finance manager.
So the senior accountant, would that be the auditor?
No.
No, that would be an authority controller or something like that, right? No, that would be a controller or something like that, right?
It's, we just missed, we changed it previously, I just missed, yeah, we changed it in the paragraph above, but we missed it there.
And after the paragraph above that, I, I noticed, uh, again, this is, this had to do with the, um, change, you know, eliminating the senior account. That first sentence should have no, should have a comment, general manager, oh, sorry, but it should have.
And.
And executed, right?
Yeah.
No comment, but and executed.
And then a period after manager.
Right. Well, uh, yes, the finance managers, exactly, so those two, um. Dramatical changes.
And if I can continue, I, I found some things that I missed before. We don't need to spend any time here on it because it doesn't change the meaning of anything, can we, can we need Denise?
Yeah.
Um, we'll, we'll, we'll talk, is that okay?
That's okay, yeah, we can, you know, motion.
We're not changing, it's all for consistency and grammatical, it's not.
Yeah, and not, we, we, we have a, um, have a motion to say, you know, improve the, uh. I mean, note the changes, the, what we just talked about, there's a little bit more, there, there are more content. Uh, related to having to eliminate senior accountants, um, references. And maybe the sentence above, uh, about the general manager and executed by the finance manager. Uh, but you could also just say, you know, any further non-material and non substantial, uh, changes or clarity in grammar. And make it. Any suggestions? Uh, they're in motion.
Sure, I move to, uh, approve the investment policy that went into the board's direction.
You have a second?
The minor radical changes.
Yeah. When we seconded the, uh, revised, really re-revised, uh, investment policy. You approved, you know, recommend, recommended for approval of the board of directors with, uh, uh, the changes as noted. On page, um, seventy-seven. Um, referring to the acquisition of references to senior accountants. And, uh, with any other grammatical, into the grammar interpretation that are non substantial could be made. Did I have a little? They've moved, right?
Right.
Typically, they're doing it in their community.
Oh, I do, that's right. I'm getting, yeah, Haley here, yeah.
I get attempted.
Ms. Pearson.
I, uh.
Hi.
Ms. McGallic, um, I, Ms. Christian.
I.
Yeah. Would you pass boards or? Uh. Very briefly, hopefully, um. Any future gen items?
That, and, so we have a meeting in June?
Uh, I think we are.
When their agenda, the items we need to discuss in June?
Now, we, we talked, uh, when we were talking at our gender review, uh, a couple of things floating out there. We have our gender review, um, Cheryl and Denise and I, in, um.
Oh, yeah.
This will be, it'll be June, it'll be two weeks from now.
So we have fourth quarter budget, this is mine.
The fourth quarter.
My memory.
Yeah.
We have the fourth quarter budget report and. And the final budget in July.
At July.
Right.
At July, not June, I've seen you, but, but we have my hat in June.
You don't have anything right now for June, except approval of the minutes?
Yeah, so what we might do, um, we'll, we'll look at the review, um, over, you know, gender review.
We could think about our review, I mean, I think when I was going through past, um, years, we have typically maybe canceled the June meeting, um.
Send them to cancel the August meeting, August meeting too, because that's half the budget, some of the budget is.
I can't think of anything off the top of my head, I mean, I could have time to meet with my sub communities, I have two that I need to get going. We have a schedule for July, but I think that's due to, um, the schedule maybe, so I could dig into that.
Let's see, so, let's, uh, listen, but what we should do, I think, is, is in, um.
Yeah.
After the gender review, consider the poss, consider the possibility of cancellation, because I think, I think August is also usually a good candidate for cancellation.
Yeah, July is gonna be, maybe.
Yeah, it does, it means, it means that either side of that tend, tend to be very light, so, we're looking at, that's a good idea. And, and, of course, the, yeah, and of course, might be, might be substantial a little bit too. We'll see.
That may not.
Oh, yeah, they'll be part of the decision. Anyway, any other, uh, any future gen items, uh, we'll have to talk about. Uh, no good to do, I, uh, so this meeting adjourned, thank you, thank you, thank you Denise for thorough. You know, hour and a half, hour and forty minutes.